Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to July 18th council meeting. If you have a cell phone, please turn it off. We'll call this meeting to order. We'll start with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Brown. Decker.
Here.
Kraus.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Domingo.
Here. Thank you. Mayors and councilmembers comments? Maurice?
I would like to thank the Carr brothers, Esteban Company that's doing great work on Cooper between Mulberry to... Anyway, they have been so pleasing and pleasurable with the residents. I met Mr. Bush, I guess he's the 13th councilman of the City of Concord, and they just were nice. I mean, they did everything they could to make sure the residents could get in out of driveways, and this went out of the way, and they were just so pleasing and pleasurable. And I want to thank Harry and the city manager for choosing them. I stopped and talked to them on two or three days, and it's just really nice to have contractors who truly show that they care about the community and the people that they serve. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm looking for a person to sit on the Albion Building Authority Board, which is the Maple Grove. So if anybody's interested, just please see the clerk for an application. Where are we with the scrap metal that we were questioned about? All of the old equipment and everything else?
Right, we haven't completed a survey at this point.
A survey?
Well, we have to assess what is junk and what can be salvageable, so we haven't gone through that process yet.
And I read the bill from the car show. The City of Albion paid for the DJ. What fund did that come out of?
That would be the DDA.
It said the City of Albion, didn't say the DDA.
I would have to look at it, it should be the DDA.
Okay. Anything else? No, we'll move on to presentations. Build Albion AmeriCorps Vista Initiative.
Come on. Is it gonna fire up? Alright, Officer Kip, why is it not working? There we go. Very good.
So, mayor and council and guests and folks watching, I'd like to present to you the Build Albion AmeriCorps Vista Initiative team. We have seven folks, well, six folks here at the moment. We'll have, we have one going to another meeting and maybe here a bit later, and then we'll have another two coming on. They have a short presentation to make to you and to anybody that gets a chance to watch this, and so I'll turn it over to our team leader, Morgan.
Good evening, council and mayor. I am Morgan Hall. I am the Vista leader of this program. I'm basically just a support system for Andy, as well as the members, to kind of bridge the gap in between faculty or staff or whatever have you, and to also facilitate...
Get a little closer to that mic.
How about that? Perfect, okay.
Pull the mic right over to you, you'll be fine. There you go.
Thank you. So like I was saying, my name is Morgan Hall. I am the Vista leader for this program. I am a liaison between Andy, as well as the Vista members, and I'm just really their support system to make sure that they're trained properly, their skills, their skillset is accurate and up to date and everything that they need to be successful in this year. A little bit about me, I am from Denton, Texas, just relocated about a week ago, so I'm new to the area. I am a recent graduate, 2014, from the University of North Texas where I received a Bachelor's of Social Work.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeremiah Simon. I am from Crystal Lake, Illinois. I studied neuroscience at U of M. Now we work on our Healthy Futures Team. The other two members of our team are Dorothy and Stephen Houshul. Stephen Houshul will be joining us in August, and Dorothy is at another meeting right now about community gardens.
And I'm Danielle Nelson, originally from West Bloomfield, Michigan. I'm currently finishing up a few classes at Albion College for my degree in public policy and economics, and I will be part of the Economic Opportunity Team, and I will be joined in August by Ellis Malone, and she will also be part of that team.
Alright, hello. I'm Miranda Hall. I'm from the town of California in the state of Pennsylvania. I graduated from Allegheny College with an English degree, and I'm on the education team.
Hello, my name is Linda Lanu. I'm from Albion. I went to Michigan State and graduated in 2013 with a degree in interdisciplinary social science, and I will be working on the education team.
And my name's Cameron Seibert. I come from Detroit, Michigan, and I am an Albion college alum. I graduated in 2013 with a major in communications and psychology, and I am also on the education team.
Hi there. I'm Dorothy Felton from Marquette, Michigan. I graduated with a degree in physical geography from Northern Michigan University, and I'm here to work with food access on the Healthy Futures Team.
So a little bit about AmeriCorps. Our top tier, more or less, sorry. Our top tier, more or less, where our funding comes from is the Corporation for National and Community Service. It is a government entity, so they fund our program. Their mission statement is to really just improve the lives of the communities where any AmeriCorps program is based out of, so that's what we're doing here, that's our goal. As well as to just strengthen communities, we're here to be, more or less, just a boost in the area, not to come in and, you know, create new things, but more or less partner with the community here, those that are already connected and have a vision of where they want their city to go, so we're just to help them out. And then to also foster civic engagement, to mobilize those members in the communities that maybe are not so much involved, but would like to, to reach out to them and to try to get them to be involved as well. As AmeriCorps Vista goes, they have somewhat of a similar mission statement, so these are our goals throughout the year as a Vista. The ideal perfect goal would be to eliminate poverty, however, we are, we realistically think that we are here to definitely alleviate poverty as best as we possibly can in the communities we're serving, as well as, again, encourage and enable members of the community to become more involved, to be in the know of what is going on to the community. So when we pull out of the community, it's not a void, someone's already there and stepping up to the plate. And then also assist with the nonprofits, the organizations, the council, the city, to really find solutions, viable solutions that end poverty, so.
So AmeriCorps Vista partners with all different kinds of organizations, faith-based, oh geez, public agencies, faith-based groups, I just came from a community gardening meeting, for example, all kinds of things going on, just to bring that together in collaboration.
Again, my name is Jeremiah, and what it does for people like us is that it creates jobs, it puts us in really unique opportunities, and it places young people in service-intensive positions.
And in addition to that, it really teaches those other valuable soft skills, as well as the technical skills and the specific positions that we'll be serving in. In addition to that, we're able to earn some money for education, and as Morgan said earlier, one of the main goals of CNCS is to foster a sense of civic engagement and political advocacy, and through our work, we'll hopefully be fostering that as well.
Again, my name is Miranda, and for the Build Albion Initiative, we're here to create long-term and sustainable community service programs.
Again, my name is Linda, and we are kind of building upon the current spirit of collaboration in Albion, partnering with the city, the college, many local organizations and community members to make Albion a model of revitalization for other struggling post-industrial towns.
Again, my name is Cameron, and the project areas will be focusing on our education, economic opportunities, and healthy futures.
Again, my name is Dorothy. There's a couple focus areas for healthy futures, including food access and healthcare access, and I will be working with the food access, and the goal to that is to increase access to healthy food and help develop and further sustain a healthy food culture within the city.
Again, my name is Jeremiah. I'll be working on healthcare access. There are a lot of local groups in Albion, local healthcare groups, patient advocacy groups doing great work. We want to connect them, we want to pool their resources, we want to create volunteer networks that can support them, we want to connect citizens to resources that maybe they didn't know they had, and in areas that they might need, we might create some new resources along the way.
Again, my name is Danielle, and as I said, I'm part of the Economic Opportunity Team, of which there are three main tracks, the first of which is job connection and access, and that, the goal of that is to connect people with jobs and job training, as well as provide resources for employer training. The second track is neighborhood stabilization, and the goal of that will be to pool resources at the state, county, and local level in order to, in order to address the needs in our neighborhoods. And then the third track will be community and economic planning, and so as there are many strategic and master plans going on at the city, county, and other local entities, we're hoping to align those plans so that we can move together in a more strategic way. And then, how will we be doing this? We'll be doing an in-depth community needs assessment with other, with a number of community partners, including the City of Albion, and so we'll be working to build volunteer networks, as well as design solutions, and so, and then it'll be a matter of implementing those solutions and monitoring and tracking our progress.
Again, my name is Miranda, and for the education part, we're here to forge community partnerships. We want to take the programs that already exist and help them to build their capacity and help them to run more efficiently, just by connecting them to more resources and things like that.
Again, my name is Linda, and through those partnerships, we want to ensure that all youth in Albion are provided with more educational opportunities and opportunities to engage with one another. We also want to ensure that the parents and families in Albion are aware of the opportunities and resources available to their youth and able to participate if they would like to.
And finally, with this, you have to be asking yourself, how do you go about that? And that's building bridges within the student to the teacher, the teacher to the parent, and the parent to the organization, and those organizations building those bridges back to the students. It's by building these diamonds or tetrahedrons, as some would call it, together, we, with our collaborative efforts combined, we build capacity for education to its maximum point.
So everything that we have aspired to do in this community is not possible without community partners, without the City of Albion, without the council members, everyone that's already established in this community. We would be coming in and not getting anywhere, so we're asking, and we will be approaching you, if not tonight, tomorrow, soon, to ask them to partner with us in this effort to revitalize Albion and to set the model that Linda was talking about. Do you guys have any questions? Yes, sir.
Who is your instructor?
Who is our...
Yep.
So Andrew is our Vista supervisor, so he's really like our point of contact for Albion and more or less AmeriCorps.
Did you practice this before you came?
We've given it twice, so more or less, yes.
Well, I want to congratulate you, because you presented that at a master's level. At the master's level, you're not, you're told, do not look at the PowerPoint, and that shows you, you did your study, you're home, and I brought...
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Wonderful. Thank you.
I'd like to give each of you a city pin and congratulate you early. It's gonna be a long period, a long time, and it's gonna be a hard work to do, but I hope you well. Congratulations and welcome to Albion.
Thank you so much.
Welcome back.
Good luck. How many of these do you have?
Councilmember French, you did a good job. Seriously.
You're welcome. Good luck to all of you. And welcome to Albion.
Can we get a picture with you and them, please? Yeah, Andy, did you want to tell everybody that they're living in town?
Sure, yeah, so the, well, I'll just say, as supervisor for this program, the college wrote the grant, and the college's commitment to the Build Albion Fellows is by providing them very low-cost housing. They're be living in the Cass neighborhood, just west of the campus, as well as a house that's on campus. We'll have, we have two homes that our vistas are living in, two separate apart, three separate apartments, and then a house, so they're within walking distance of the downtown. I might also add that they are currently housed in the EDC building on the, on the main level, will be moving to the 101 building when 101 North Superior is completed at the end of August, first part of September.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Welcome to Albion.
Citizens' comments, persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to agenda items only and to no more than five minutes. Proper decorum is required. Is there any comments on the agenda this evening?
Yes, Paul Shudell. I live at 514 Linden Avenue, and I have presented a petition to Andy about the condition of our road and relation to the road into the mill race, and we're just concerned about the condition of it and it's, how it's deteriorating, and along with the bank, there's, we, we did some cleaning along the road today with some brush and things that needed to get removed, and found, discovered more holes in the, in the street that I think go directly into the mill race. Discovered a drain that I didn't know was there, that is completely filled up with dirt and debris, and we're just, we know what's gone on in the past. We've lived there for 12 years and watched it steadily go downhill, and whatever's been done in the past is the past, and we're kind of looking to the future and see where we can develop a plan, a game plan, to, to figure out what to do with it. And there's this concern, as we drive along there, there are times that I know that we're very appreciative of the city to have filled in some of the holes, some of the forty-some that are between the end of Linden and down to our, our part of the street at the end there, but it's, you can just see the bank caving in, and it's just, it's a time, and not to be, you know, I just, when I have my next heart attack, I just want to make sure that the ambulance can get down there, to, to get down there to take care of things, but it's just, we, you know, just want to have some kind of game plan. I think you're going to talk about it later, Andy, and that, so we appreciate anything that you can do and, and look forward to the future of doing something better with the street. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no more comments on the agenda. We'll move on. Approval of council minutes for July 5th, 2016?
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Passes. Items for individual discussion. Request approval for the RFP for single trash hauler? Support? Nobody. Lack of participation? Right, but there wasn't a second. There was no second.
I'll second.
Okay. Anybody want to talk about it?
Mayor and council, in response to your request at our last meeting, we included those additional details relative to the RFP to solicit bids for a single trash hauler in Albion. If you approve, we will go forward and issue the RFP. The pre-bid discussion will be scheduled for August 15th. The actual date for the turning in of the bids will be September 7th.
Yes.
I have a question on the wording, Section 3, Number 1. It uses the terminology of shall. Could it be changed to may or must be picked up weekly, not shall be picked up weekly? Shall is kind of arbitrary, and I think a more definitive wording might be nice.
I would defer to call them, I thought usually shall is considered mandatory language.
Right. Which section are you looking at?
I'm looking at Scope of Services. Would be one, the collecting, hauling, disposing of residential refuge from dwelling units and city buildings located within the city once per week, and the terminology later in Number 2 is shall occur either once per week or by weekly, and I thought that it would be nice if it said that it should be changed to will be or must be.
Well, in the, in the term of, in, in, I guess what I would refer to as legalese, shall is interpreted to mean must or will.
When these come in, are we going to see a lineup of them, of what company is, what they're offering? Yes, we will present a summation of the responses.
Thank you.
I've had some senior citizens question me on whether this is a good idea, because if they base a price across the city, from what they've taken evaluation-wise, if they only have one bag, their price could double. They're very concerned about that, and they don't care for that very much, and I don't think it's fair to them either. So if this is just a approval for the RFP to see what it comes in at, that might change everybody's mind, just to see what the prices will come in, and this is not, let me say that again, this is not going to happen, this is just to get the prices of what it would cost. So it still has to go through council for approval after that comes in, so I just want everybody to understand that we're only getting prices at this point. Yes, Cheryl?
I have the same question, mayor. Many times, I have some of my elderly neighbors that don't even have one bag a week, and to ask them to pay every week for something that they're not using, I, I don't find that fair.
Maurice?
The situation we're facing here in the City of Albion, our police chief has come to this mic and stated that we have an illegal dumping problem. Most of the housing complexes have put in cameras to stop. Our neighborhoods, and I'm Tracy is here, can testify that we have an illegal dumping problem that's out of control. Yes, we have had proposals for refuge collection before, a lot of citizens don't sign up, enforcement is a problem, but I want you to know the larger picture. If we do not institute something to try to start a control, the problem is going to get large. We got a brand-new hotel coming in, we want something on the books to try to curb this. We do not want to have a constant refuge problem. Yes, I definitely feel for the senior citizens. I'm definitely asking their daughters, sons, or neighbors, or someone to assist them. And the reality of it is, I don't mean to be harsh, but sometimes you do suffer the few for the many. I don't mean that to be against the senior citizens, but we need to do something to help them. By law, we can't change the prices or do anything to be discrimination, so I'm asking you citizens to take a look at this and let us keep working through this, because we have some wiggle room out there. This is just to try to get a bid in and see what the haulers can do for us. Thank you.
I have a question on Jay as well. I want to know what ordinance is in place at this point that would have any protection against leakage from the hauler, if we hire one, or any kind of odors or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of. I would, I would imagine it would fall under some type, the, sometimes I've seen the trash haulers leachate out of the bottoms of their trucks, and they spill it all over, and luckily it has a tendency to hang there until it is done, and as far as I know, we would have to look underneath, or look into their permits. I guess I would say that they can't do something. I would imagine that's the only one that I can think of.
Is it something that we could look into, having an ordinance put in place for leakage and something like that?
I think there already is.
So, yep.
I don't know that we have an ordinance that would, that would address that. I mean, I guess hypothetically, we could do that.
I could find one.
Right, and I, I think it's because, I don't, because I think it doesn't exist, but I guess what I would say is, usually any state regulation on that is going to be, have more teeth than anything that we can do, but to answer your question, we could do it.
Okay. Just a second, if we could let John?
John Tracy, Director of Planning, Building, and Code. There is a section that addresses kind of an gray area, but it's, it does address the condition of the haulers.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
There's the section in the ordinance that does address a portion of the haulers and the condition of their vehicles, so that they will be in correct working order. I'll supply that to you.
Okay, good. Cheryl?
We had this problem a few years ago, I don't know how many years ago now, but it was brought to the council at that time, and I'm not sure how we acted on it, but I do remember that it was the same hauler, it was the same hauler that came to the same place every time, and when they turned the truck, because of the way that they were turning around, it spilled the stuff all on the street, and not the garbage, but...
The leach, yeah.
So, there is something, we did take action, I just can't remember, it was so long ago.
Well, I think my advice on this is probably to go through and see what the RFPs say, and then we can make those after we get the bids in to find out whether we're either in the ballpark, or whether we should, you know, continue with what we do from that point. Okay? So I guess I don't know how to answer. I guess if we vote yes with the roll call vote, is that we're going to go ahead with the RFP. So roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo?
Yes, thank you. Request approval of Resolution 201643, approval of Enbridge, Galma Zulu River Committee Recreation Grant.
I want to leave that up to...
You have to make a motion to say of support. You have to make a motion.
Yes, we have to motion and support it, then you can leave it up to Cheryl to talk. Okay?
And I support.
Okay, moved and supported. Cheryl, if you would explain that, please. Cheryl, if you would explain that, please.
Okay, Mayor and council, I'm very excited to share with you that we are the recipient of a grant from the Enbridge Organization as part of the Kalamazoo River Recreational Foundation. And it is towards the Holland Park and the resurfacing of the basketball court, as well as the restroom upgrade and the cleanup of the river in that area. So we just need your authorization to accept the grant and move forward with those projects.
How much is the grant?
Ninety thousand.
Ninety thousand?
Yes.
At a cost to Albion of?
Zero.
The estimated total cost of all of those projects was one hundred and five with the difference being in kind and laboring materials.
So Albion has to come up with the remaining?
Correct.
In kind. So time and equipment.
Right.
Any other questions? Yes.
Is that defined as a matching grant or the, okay, so what's the price of the matching grant?
Fifteen.
The total project cost?
Price of the matching grant, please. Price of the matching grant, please, if it's in kind. And our labor area, people, we've got to do some work. Labor, time, it's money. I'm just asking so I can report to my constituents how much money in kind it's going to cost.
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen, okay. Simple answer, question answered. Fifteen dollars to the ninety thousand. Thank you.
And that comes from?
Well, it will come from primarily our own internal labor.
Okay, so you're going to use city labor for the fifteen thousand dollars in kind?
Correct. Primarily. There may be volunteers involved, but primarily it'll be internal labor.
Yes.
And that will be taken away from other services that we need to do.
Well, actually, it'll be mostly administrative because we plan to be contracting for the work itself.
And I don't mean to be difficult, please don't get, I just want to do my spreadsheet so when I come back, I just want to talk and be able to address my people. You're making me feel bad, but I'm just asking. Of course, I want to hear what you go through with. Maybe I should be.
I've already had questions of why employees are down there working on the park project. So that's why these questions are being raised.
Are they working on the which project?
They're working at Holland Park.
Yes.
Putting in equipment and things like that.
But shall we say, Holland Park belongs to Albion City? But you know, I think that's what a lot of people get mixed up because when I'm talking to people, you know, and they're talking about Holland Park, I often have to say to them, because they'll, because I do a lot of working in that park. And they tend to say, well, the park you're working at. But I say to them, no, 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 that is an Albion City park. So it belongs to the city of Albion. It does not belong to a private person. You know, I work there, and I am not paid for one penny of work that I do there. Would not even want to be paid for one penny of it because I'm for this city. I was just reading an article, excuse me, that said that parks and places of entertainment in a city, it's what's beginning to bring cities up. When people go to a place and they see things that's enjoyable about that city, things that they do that they see as enjoyable about the city, it makes them want to come back. It makes them even want to move there because the article I was reading was endorsing parks in cities. I've talked to people. I talked to one lady who was in Holland Park who came over from Jackson, and she said, I come over a couple of times a week to bring my nieces and nephews over to play in this park because it's so nice. And I think, you know, when I'm talking to Harry, because Harry and I have had a couple of conversations where I've said to him, Harry, this is not my park. This is an Albion City park because I wanted him to do things there. And he would start telling me, well, the guys are busy doing this. And I know we're short on help, you know, and he would say, well, the guys are busy working on this and this and this. So I don't know if we're not, I keep saying, Harry, this is an Albion City park. It belongs to the city. You are part of the city. Your guys work for the city. So I think we just need to, when we start talking about the park, I think the park is an asset to the city. It's not taking anything away from the city or making the city better. I try not to be so adamant now about it because I realize he doesn't have the people that he needs to do the work. But I still say, as much as we can get done, you know, and I also said, we're constantly asking for money. It's ninety thousand dollars. We ask for the people, give us the money to do this here. We want to fire this people to a forty thousand dollar grant that we'll be hearing from soon. They're giving us the money. If they don't see that money being used, if they ride by that park and there's constantly nothing there, they're going to say, well, we can't give them the money for it. They're not doing anything with that money. So I think from time to time, we have to kind of, if we can, shuffle things around so that somebody can put something out there in that park so that people can see that the money that it gave us, that all we had to do was fill out a paper to get, is being used in a positive way for city.
Yes, Maurice?
I consider that a tangent. I have sat here and talked about my place, placemaking, and streetscape, the bone of all of our societies. And you people stopped me from going to the Michigan Municipal League for some of the very same things that you have said. I think that's unfair. I catch H E L L from Dunkin' up in my neighborhood with Harry, incidents in City Hall concerning street sweeping and other services, the cutting of the grass out at the cemetery, where these people are complaining that these things aren't even done. I support the park. However, we are doing one hundred percent of the work with fifty percent of the labor. And the mayor is correct. He goes through the numbers, and he's seeing things, and he's saying, why is this being done with city money? I have no problem with supporting the park, but for you to say what you just said, we have other issues here in the city that need to be faced.
I don't think I've said anything.
Okay. Over on, tonight, I must address Kennedy Street, Second Street, all the way down to Broadway with street sweeping. And I go to Harry, and we network fine. Harry will tell me, Maurice, we had some other obligations over by the college that graduation. And you know what I go back and tell my people? Look, we prioritize things. I need you to wait. So we all are in the same situation as Holland Park, but for you to put Holland Park above everything else is unfair.
Mr. Barnes, not one time did I say put Holland Park up above anything. But I am saying that if we don't show people who give us the money to do something for free, then we are lacking too.
It's not, we've got fifteen thousand dollars worth of city work that this man and everybody else in the police department has to do. I'm not trying to argue. I'm just saying, please be considered over the entire city. I want to, I'm for the whole city. I can only do what I can do with the resources we have. And I've always had the same platform.
Yes, Becky?
I don't think that Ms. Reed is saying that we should concentrate solely on Holland Park, but we've been given the opportunity with this grant that if we show some effort back, it's going to bring nothing but accolades and help. I mean, it's just, and more money. I think that we do care about the entire city, but this is an opportunity, ninety thousand dollars. We have to show that we appreciate it, we're going to use it, and we're going to welcome more opportunities in this community. So I honestly disagree with you. I think Ms. Reed is absolutely right.
There's no need to disagree. I just wanted the citizens to know that the price of the fifteen thousand dollars in kind was the matching grant money that our city workers have to put in so we could get it, period. The math is there. I want the ninety. I want the park to go. But our city has to put in fifteen thousand dollars of labor that's going to take from somewhere else. So let's just work together with it. It's not a fight, but let's be transparent to the people and let them know the fifteen thousand dollars worth of work that Harry has to put people over with, period. And he is, he can speak for himself.
Mayor and council, if I might, we all recognize that our crews are overworked and understaffed at the present time. So trying to prioritize when everything is important is always a challenge. One of the situations we faced, in particular in regards to the senior exercise area, which seems to be the point of the conversation right now, is that it was budgeted based on the expectation of there being a volunteer team to do the majority of the installation costs. That did not come into being. So that left the installation up to our staff entirely. So we're getting pressure from the funder to get it done quickly. At the same time, we do have obligations, especially this time of year. So we're not doing it as quickly as we would like, but we're trying to schedule it in a timely fashion as well. So we're just trying to work with the situation we have before us. This grant relative to the Enbridge was priced intending that we would be getting contractors to do the majority of the work. So it won't be as labor-intensive on our end.
Thank you. No more? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Decker?
Yes.
Kraus? French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo?
Yes, thank you.
Congratulations.
See, request approval of 2016-44 Budget Amendments?
Mayor and council, I wanted to ask Tom Mead to come up just in case you have specific questions. But we wanted to make the budget amendments as much in advance of our expenditures for these areas. One reflects the city managers, where you had approved previously the five thousand dollars for me to hire the intern to work for a period of time. And the other areas were explained as well. Let's see, one was the finance director.
Would you like?
You want to go through it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Might be easier. Tom Mead, Finance Department, Finance Director, how's that? If you start at the top, just real quick, some of these are just reallocating money from one line to another. That's the case of the very first one. The administrative charges are the charges we charge to all the other departments for administrative costs. We're going to try to keep that in a separate line item instead of lumping that in with all other charges for services. Therefore, we're just moving our budgeted amount from one account to another. No change to the fund balance. Below that, we have that sale of fixed assets, 14-6. It's not really fixed asset, but for lack of a better place to put it, that was the money we received from consumers for the easement. You technically wouldn't really have to approve or be aware of, I guess, a revenue coming in, but I wanted to put it on here so that you can see the net effects when we get down through all the expenditure changes that are listed below. So keep that in mind, and we'll readdress that shortly here. As the city manager pointed out, the next one there, the city manager is, of course, the five thousand for the intern. The finance director, one, again, that's just real, reallocation of money. We didn't get our part, our full-time person hired as quickly as we thought. So we had to continue with the contractual expense to account tents for a little longer into 2016. But of course, that means our salaries are going to be a little lower than anticipated. So we're just reallocating that money. Again, no net effect to the fund balance. Public safety, we got two things going on there. Mainly, it's a reallocation, again. In the past, we've always put all our repairs into one line item. We talked with DPW and public safety, and we thought it might make more sense and help us track some of our expenses better if we could break them out by separate line items for vehicles, separate one for the heavy trucks, and a separate one for equipment, should the equipment pool decide to use it. So really, all we're doing is taking the thirty thousand that was initially budgeted for public safety repairs and just splitting it out between the three different funds. The additional thing that's going on in that account is they did have a patrol car that was damaged. We received approximately five thousand from the insurance company. So that is showing up as reimbursement. And of course, we had to pay money out to have it fixed. So we're adding that back in. So the net effect, again, is zero to the fund balance. General appropriations. It does show the forty-five thousand that is going to be paid for the Albion Marshall Connector. I think you guys already approved that. But again, these things weren't technically approved in a budget amendment format, so we're just sharing it again tonight. The only thing on here that I think you probably haven't seen before tonight is that little, that sixty-seven hundred above it. All of our defined benefit plans with MERS, and when I say all of them, MERS has it broken down between DPW and, I think there's even dispatch, and there's the hospital, back when we had the hospital employees. They have them broken down, different accounts. They send us a, I don't know, some kind of actuarial, and they tell us if we're over or underfunded in different ones. We are underfunded in a couple of these. What we've always done in the past is taken money from overfunded ones and shifted around to cover the underfunded. But when you're paying out more than what's coming in, that's only going to work so long. So personally, I think it makes more sense. If they're saying we're underfunded in some of these, we should, and they do invoices for these, by the way. My proposal is we start paying it in. We're splitting it out between the different funds. The general fund effect of that would be about sixty-seven hundred a year. And just a reminder, a few weeks ago, you heard the auditors say our pension funds are very well-funded. I think this, you know, we kind of have an obligation to keep them that way rather than drain them. So that's where the sixty-seven hundred is coming from. So the bottom line is, with the connector being the largest one, we're showing fifty-one thousand seven hundred reduction in fund balance. However, because of that fourteen-six that came in from the consumer's payment up above, the net is forty-two thousand one hundred. And then just to let you know, we did receive twenty-five hundred just today as a mini-grant from Calhoun County Seniors for the connector. So really, we're looking at about thirty-nine six is where we're at right now today with net effect of the fund balance. Questions on that page? The next page is slightly different. I actually will ask you to look at the bottom half of that first. In the Drug Law Enforcement Fund, or Drug Enforcement Fund, last year, you can see, we had budgeted for about a ninety-four hundred, almost ninety-five hundred dollar loss. We actually ended the year with a forty-two thousand dollar surplus. That's attributable to a lot of things. But one of the things that's attributable to is we did receive a reimbursement from the IRS for an invoice of eighty-five hundred and twenty-two dollars. I don't know where the breakdown happened, but that invoice did not get paid last year, and the company all of a sudden realized that and got ahold of us this year and said, hey, you guys owe us eighty-five hundred dollars. So to pay it, it's going to have to come out of this year's fund balance. But like I said, it's money we already got in, and it was sitting in the fund balance from last year. So in a sense, it's going to look like it's reducing this year's fund balance. But had we paid it last year, the money wouldn't, you know, last year's fund balance would have been lower. So in a sense, it's kind of a wash. So that's what's going on with that one. The next page, I don't, did you have an amendment to them?
This was actually just a summation of the First Amendment that we had this year, which is relative to accommodating these salary increases.
Yes, these have all been approved.
Yes.
I don't know, back in January or something, so we'll skip over those. The other, or the page after that, it's for the Fitz Street and Sheridan Court Street Projects this summer. If you recall, if you jump one more page back, it will show the Street Improvement Fund in a 2016 council-approved budget column. We showed the revenue coming in because we knew we were going to collect the taxes. But at the time, if you remember, we didn't know how much it was going to cost for Superior Street, so we were. Street, so we were, we hadn't budgeted anything for this summer Fitz Street project, so we've got all zeros in the expenditure accounts down there. Now that you've approved the Fitz Street and Sheridan Court project, we're just, again, I know the project's been approved, but we just want to formally put this on the budget as a expense item. So, that's all we're doing with that money there. And, again, the revenues, as you can see, will cover the expenses on that. And the last one is, this is also for the Street Improvement Fund. This will not have any impact on the fund balance, it's just going to be a wash, but we do need to put something in these line items. Initially, the college talked about partnering with us for some resurfacing work, and they've changed their mind, but we hadn't incurred some engineering costs before they decided to go a different direction, and they've already agreed to reimburse us for it, just like they would if they were partnering with us. So, but, again, we got to show the expense, so we're going to pay this administrative or the engineering costs, but we will reimburse the college, or bill the college and they'll reimburse us. So, that'll be a wash as well. Any questions on any of that?
And I, I think you already, I didn't understand what you were saying, you approved it. On revenue and expenditures for the city of Alvin when you're doing the drug enforcement?
Uh huh.
It says contractual services, the change is going to be eight thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars. Why?
That's the amount of the invoice that should have been paid.
That was the invoice?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, it should have been paid last year, it's going to be paid this year.
Thank you.
Any others?
Thank you.
And if I could just add, maybe going forward, what I think the City Manager hit on this, what we'd like to try to do is, in the past, we sit down in the fall and, as we're getting ready to do next year's budget, we try to also look at the current year and see where we're at and do a mass amendment to all the line items. What we would like to try to do is get into a habit, if we know that there's something big that's coming or that we're facing, is to bring it to you as it occurs, which is why we're doing this tonight. Two things, number one, obviously, to keep you guys abreast of things that are going on, but also, as we try to increase technology and put our information out on the web and stuff, it gives us more accurate numbers with the amended budget numbers out there, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
And I wanted to thank Tom Mead for the effort he put into this during an exceptionally busy time. He has a number of reports to do, but he created a format so that all of the departments can be providing updates relative to amendments that are needed in their revenues and expenses so that we can have more timely information going forward. Well, thank you again, Tom.
No further questions, roll call, roll please.
Councilmember Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo?
Yes, thank you. Indeed, request approval of Resolution twenty sixteen dash forty-five, acceptance of the USDA grant for another Alvin Department of Public Safety vehicle.
So moved.
Questions? Isn't that a matching, go ahead, Maurice?
Oh, I forgot. I think we got the same question.
Right, don't we have to come up with money to?
Twenty-two thousand, application, constitutional.
To match that?
Yeah, I believe that the original grant was twenty-five thousand dollars from the grant and twenty-one from us. My plan on this would be to use twenty-five thousand, the original twenty-five thousand from the grant to purchase the car this year and pay for three years, just like we did the last two cars, so we'd be eleven thousand dollars out of the two thousand seventeen budget and eleven thousand dollars out of the two thousand eighteen budget, roughly.
Yes.
And each year, that eleven thousand dollars, which come out of police fund or?
Yeah, it come out of public safety funds, which should be no change in our budget currently. With the reduction of one employee this year to a new employee, that's about a thirteen thousand dollar savings for one year, and I expect one or two other officers to be leaving shortly, which would give us additional thirteen thousand dollar savings for that year.
So, and when the aggregate value of all of this, when you submit your yearly budget even here?
Yep.
It will match?
Should.
Okay, cool. I got you. Thank you. I'm straight.
Blue or black?
I plan to get the same blue car that we, the last two that we got is the plan. I have to talk about the, with them with the grant. We put in for this grant back in two thousand fourteen, and I think we actually did a Chevy Impala, or not Impala, Caprice, I think is what it was. And last time, we got the Chevy Tahoe on this, and we had to make some amendments to it, and that was no problem at all. So, my plan is just to amend it and get the same Ford that we've gotten before.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
What?
Can I ask a follow-up question? How many vehicles less than five years old do we have now?
We have two thousand sixteen's, a two thousand thirteen, and a two thousand twelve, and then it goes to two thousand eight after that. My plan would be replace the two thousand twelve Tahoe. Our insurance company has told us they don't want us driving cars with more than a hundred and fifty thousand miles on them. That car currently has a hundred and twenty-seven, and by next summer, it will be to its hundred and fifty mark, so.
Okay. Thank you.
And that Tahoe was purchased on the same grant last time.
Right. Maurice?
I publicly have to be the bad guy. When this came up, you know, some citizens asked me, there was a police situation, I guess, I don't know, maybe a year ago, when two officers, I don't know if they crashed into each other or something?
Right.
And the city recouped the damages of that, how was that handled?
That's where the two blue Fords that we have now came from. We received insurance money of about thirty-four thousand dollars for that, and then the city paid the rest of that, which we are currently paying at nineteen thousand dollars a year for this year and next year.
So, we, I guess, we pay for two vehicles?
Yes.
And the insurance reimbursed us?
For half of it.
Okay.
Roughly.
All right. I'm straight.
Further questions? Roll call, roll?
Councilmember Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo?
No. Request approval of Resolution twenty sixteen forty-six, MML Meadowbrook Property and Liability Insurance Renewal.
So moved.
There's a whole lot of money there.
Yeah.
That cost the city of Alvin, or I should say, the city taxpayers, to insure all of our vehicles and properties and all of that, so. Are there any questions on the renewal?
Is that of the vehicles?
Pardon?
No, this is Meadowbrook and?
Oh.
That's our blanket policy for all property.
No, I came up with thirty-eight thousand on police cars. I'm, I'm behind, that's all. Go ahead, go ahead.
Yes.
So, this is, what percentage of an increase is this relative to last year? Is it?
It is a small increase, and I believe, I recall, that was related to, was it worker comp claims?
Okay.
It was a small increase, not significant increase.
Okay.
And we do qualify for the dividend and for twenty-one thousand.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo?
Yes. After discussion of the street sweeping?
Yeah, that was my agenda item. I really believe we're fine with, I talked with Harry. Citizen was complaining that they had documentation, that the streets weren't being swept, which was true. I talked with Harry, he explained to me of some other obligations for some ceremonies at Alvin College. There was some manpower needed at Holland Park. I shared this with Citizen and told him that we would work with it. I went to see Ann Kemp, the housing, because of all of the trash that from Second Street brought well over to Cooper down Kennedy. We believe it could be from when the hauler dumps it in, maybe blowing some into the bushes, and the citizens were thinking that corner maybe going to crash out. So, right now, and this morning, I heard the street sweepers, they woke me up, they been in the area, and Harry has let me know that they have a schedule that they do and they try to stay with their schedule, but when priorities come, I don't think I should use the word priorities, but when things that need to be addressed, our ceremonies and different things, coming back from Holland Park, cemetery, he has to take the labor and do that, and I'm asking my constituents to work with it. So, I think we're fine. Don't you care? I mean, they've knocked on my door, they called me, and I welcome them to do that, and I want you, you know, you people to know that, hey, I'm in there for you, but, you know, we're working with fifty percent less labor than we had, and Harry and Jim, the guys are really trying hard. Some of them are citizens, are pulling teeth, dealing with them, I got to be honest, just hard dealing with some of them. Thank you.
Anyone else on street sweeping? If not, discussion of Linden Avenue?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I brought this to the attention of the City Manager, as Mr. Shudell from Linden Avenue reported in the citizen comments about the agenda. He organized a petition of the residents of this, of Linden Avenue and made a request that the city look into options for moving forward that, with that street, which is, in fact, slowly and exorbitantly falling into the mill race. As I recall, and maybe someone's on council, or maybe Mayor Joe, you can remember, we, there was a conversation about the, the safety and health of the mill race that, that the DEQ, maybe it was DNR, had, had been saying that they're not interested in supporting man-made waterborne structures and that there might be money for the demolition of such structures. And there was even a possibility of, I can't remember if they actually came or not, but the Army Corps of Engineers coming in to do an assessment of our mill race and our river moving forward with respect to the dam up on, by Haven Road, but also of the mill race. So, in, in that large context, you know, Linden Avenue, which basically has a road that abuts the, the mill race, and there hasn't been, because of the ban on repairs to that, that it is, as Mr. Shudell has reported to us this evening, that the mill race is, in fact, the road is actually falling into the mill race in some places, that holes are developing between the guard rail and the road. And so, it's a situation that, over time, has become really untenable, but we also recognize that resources are very in short supply, and so I just bring that to the council for conversation. The City Manager and I had a very brief conversation this evening, but I would welcome some comments about how we might move forward in this, for this request. I mean, I have some ideas too, but.
Yeah, sure.
Well, for many years, we've been talking about the fact that our dam is not in good shape, and there's been questions for a long time about what we're going to do about that, and I don't think that's something that we're going to solve over the next?
Ten minutes.
Week or so. But, I, I do think it's something that we really need to start looking into. I was looking at Michigan DNR grants, there are Michigan DNR grants out there to have some of the engineering done, and I'm not sure that some of the engineering wasn't already done, because it seems to me that when we were talking about turning that into a whitewater course, that there had been some preliminary work done.
Right, right.
So, I'm wondering if those plans are around somewhere, because I know they were, but that's been, probably been ten years.
Yeah.
I just think that that's something we really need to look into, because as we have seen, things are changing in, in Victory Park. When you look where the cattails are now growing, my kids used to play soccer there. I, I mean, there's, there's something going on there. And with the, I'm sure that there are people at the college that could give us some more insight into exactly what's happening with the ecology over there, there's something going on. But, I was looking at the, as beautiful as it is, I was looking at the dam the other day, and it's in really not good shape. Really not good shape. And, so I think maybe it's time that we start at least the conversation about what can be done, because it's a much bigger issue, I think, than Linden Avenue, but right now, we need to stabilize Linden so that the, the street doesn't fall in.
Yes. Well, did you have something to say?
I will.
Well, I've already spoken, so you need to.
Well, again, full respect to people who do the petition. You put it in writing, you come down, and there's a need. However, in my area, they usually don't write it down, they just verbalize it. I'm willing to support and address your emergency as needed, but, again, we're opening up Pandora's box of the areas in the city that have gone without. First, Second, and Third Street in my community received paving one time, that's the first time that they ever paved. In the years since, they've never received a paving since, and I'm dealing with that. But, I will support this. I just want you to know that the gripes will come again, and I keep saying, if Precinct Six is going to be successful, Precinct One should be successful. If Precinct One is failing, Precinct Six is failing because of the demographics and the complaints that you get, and you totally understand where I'm coming from. I want to have crossover appeal that we all can work together in the demographics that we're trying to come. Sitting in this seat, it's tough because of what I have to deal with, but I'm going to support this, thank you.
Yes.
So, thank you, Mayor. I was thinking, and Cheryl and I talked about this, Cheryl, I don't know if you want to articulate the idea that you floated by me, which I think is a really good one, so invite you to do that.
Yes, I think when I first started here, so probably a year and a half ago, we had the DNR come through and we actually did a tour of the area and looked at the dams in particular, so we understand that they're in dire need of repair, so it's a question of getting the resources. So, my suggestion in talking with Councilmember French is that we actually put together a work group so that we can, one, identify what are the specific needs, and, two, what are some of those resources that we can go after actively. We just don't have the, the depth in-house to do all of that, you know, all of that ourselves, but if we could work together with the residents, the college, a couple of people from, from the council, I think we can make a lot of inroads, and we don't have to start over from scratch. We do have some of the prior studies in regards to it, and the county is also looking at, you know, on a more holistic basis, you know, what makes sense in terms of dam removals along the Kalamazoo River, so how we can leverage all of this to try to bring, bring those resources here. So, that would be my recommendation, that we put together that work group so we can get started. The DNR Trust Fund Grants, I think, are due in April, so in terms of timing for that resource, that we have the timing to get that done.
Yes.
So, I'd, I'd be more than willing to, to chair that. Mr. Shudell, if you could communicate with your residents, get a couple of folks who'd be interested in sitting on that working group, probably get Jim Leonardson, probably, maybe John Tracy. I know, sorry dude, I didn't want to give you more work, but just someone who can sort of help us with some of that planning so that we can then spend the next couple of months just gathering all that data, and then we can find some funding sources, and, our City Manager is amazingly effective. We've heard tonight about finding resources and then, and working with groups to successfully attract those resources to the city. So, I think that, I think that's a great idea, Cheryl, and I, and I look forward to working with you. Paul, if you could comment, yeah?
I think I, I realize, you know, having lived here for twelve years, that we need a lot of things done in Alvin, and I think we understand our position in this pecking order about the thing. My only concern is that the road is falling into the mill race. I understand there are other streets. I drive down Urban Avenue in my bicycle and I, I can dodge, I can't dodge them on, on Linden anymore than what they refixed them, but I understand the hierarchy, and, but I, I just think there's something urgent about the road falling in there, and I, and I, I don't- there, and I understand your problems and the whole thing, I understand the whole, and I've evolved from teamwork all my life, and so, anything we can do to facilitate this, I'm all for it, and would be glad to help as whenever I can on this thing here, but I just think it's, if it wasn't for the mill race, you know, well, we could, we could live with it, you know? But as I ride my bicycle down there, I can just see it, it's tilting this way now, and there's ever more, there's ever more gullies underneath there to do it, so that's my point. So, thank you.
Sir, I want you to recognize right now, I feel your situation is the priority, because that's what the damage is at the moment.
One of the problems that we have is we ignore these problems too long. I've lived here all my life, and Linden Avenue has been like that all my life that I can remember, and this is not the first study you think you're gonna do. If people would just go look in the records, you'll find these studies have been done time and time again. They've been told, first of all, you gotta get rid of the trees. Trees have roots, roots follow water, and what do they do? They expand, they get bigger, they lift the sidewalks, they lift the streets, they tear up the curbs. Now, they knew that a long time ago. Now, it's totally devastated it, and we've had, matter of fact, I do believe it was Mickey that we went down there, and everything has to come out, I mean, from sidewalk all the way across. Good luck if you think you're gonna find a grant to do that. And then, we had to fight the people that didn't want you to cut the trees down, so you can't, you can't want one thing and then not want something else. I mean, you can't, you can't do that. And unfortunately, the mill race, is there a purpose for it anymore?
Not anymore.
No, other than it's there. We don't like to cover up water any more than we have to, but the nice thing about Linden Avenue is that you live, you got water on both sides of it. It's a nice view, not nice on the property, especially when the water gets too high, and things like that. The dam, the same way. We've been fighting that and putting that off, and putting that off, and putting that off. Now, the thing you have to remember is, all those waterways had a function at one point in time in its life of Albion. It has not anymore other than being water, and it's pretty. But Albion is for the forks, so we have to kinda stay in pace and in tune with that. All that's left now is Third Pond, which is the top pond by the bridge, not needed anymore. We should fill that in, do away with that dam. First Pond, which is the old ice skating rink, we either need to fill that in or quit calling it a swimming hole or something, because I don't even know how the fish can swim in it, it's so bad. And we spent all that money and we never took care of it. Another one of those projects, we had to have, we had to have, now what happens that we haven't? It's a change of things that you have to do, which all costs money. And then, you're, where the cattails are, that didn't happen overnight, that happened over a long period of time. T-ball actually started out there, back with Jerry Sikarski when I was a youngster. There's a pipe that runs underneath that from one water to the other water, and it runs right underneath the pavilion. It needs to be looked at to find out, they've been out there. The problem you have now is if they've declared that a wetlands, you're done, you will not touch it again. So, there's a lot of variables when you let things go and don't take care of them. And I know Greg Strand, we talked about this, that they wanna do away with the waterfalls and the dams. There's something about the straight streams now, that the erosion and things from the waterfalls, so there's money out there to do those, but what we need is, we need enough money to do from beginning to end. We can't just put a Band-Aid on it, which we have been, you know, for years on the dams. So, like I said, we've done away with the use of that water for generating millstones and for making power, so, but we can't, because of the forks, change that area in there, because that's what Albion is, you know, designed on, was the forks of the river. And I think we can take, make the change, but it's not gonna be an easy one, it's gonna be a very difficult one, because once they start that, there's gotta be a way for you folks to be able to get in and out. And right now, you know, if they started on their road, there wouldn't be. So, temporarily, I see you're gonna have to have some type of a bridge or something to go over into Rieger Park or someplace in order to, you know, get yourselves out of there, because it's not gonna be where you can take just this little bit over here and leave that, it's gonna be a total rebuilding construction. And all of that has been looked into several times over many, many years, and I think the Corps of Engineers could probably come in here and give us a good, you know, but I think the way it is right now, even soil boarding would be some type of help, so we know what stages we're going through and everything else. But when you start messing with the water, you start messing with a lot of government agencies, and it turns muddy, so, and expensive. But like I said, for projects like that, there really is money out there. It's foolish, we let our roads go, but there's money out there to take dams out and things like that. So, take that in consideration, that it isn't the first time this has been brought to us, and I'm sure it won't be the last, but it does need to be looked into, like several other places. I am really surprised that a house or two hasn't lost a foundation down to there. But, you know, it's, it's something, you know, we could look into, but it's not gonna be a five-minute fix, and it will take some strategy to get that figured out down through there. You weren't there long enough, if you only been there twelve, but it did flood once or twice back there, you know, off of the riverside, not the mill side. We were called to task there to put up sandbags so that, you know, people didn't lose that. The one that amazes me is that garage or the barn that's over the river.
Yeah.
I have never seen that lose one iota of levelness or anything else.
I know, right.
That has been there since I can remember, and I'm quite young, and, but like I said, I have, I have never seen that move or anything. It is just, I don't know what they think built out, but they've done, they've done a wonderful job. So, don't get discouraged, it's just a process that everybody has to go through to try to get things done, so, okay? Update on Holland Park, I don't know if that update was what you were telling Maurice or...
Well, what we were going over was what we've done in Holland Park so far and what's coming up. Last year, we had a church from Nashville, Illinois that came in doing community work, and they came in through the college, and they helped us to place the children's section. We had got a grant from Fire Keepers for thirty-five thousand dollars, one from the Community Foundation for twenty thousand, and one from the Philanthropic Women for Children's Walk for thirteen thousand, and so, we got all the small children's things put in. Then, we want to work on doing the rest, of which we're, we've got ten thousand dollars from the seniors' millage, and then we've got some more from one of the companies, Greenfield Fitness Company, that is helping to put in the senior section. And I wanna start out by saying thank you to Harry, Mr. Longens, and his group, because they have been, everything that they could do at the times the rain would allow them to do it, they've been trying to help us get the senior section in. In the senior section, there, there are gonna be outside workout machines for senior citizens, and there's also, one of the machines will have a handicaps part on it for people who are in field chairs and things. And we think it's necessary to honor our senior citizens too, and we're right across the street from the senior citizens' comp, senior citizens' complex, and so, we're fixing that up for them, so if they don't wanna work out in that building, they can come outside in the sunshine and in the fresh air, and we've also researched and found out that that's very good for seniors. Plus, it gives them time to talk with other people and share, and it's healthy. And so, we've got those sections going, we've got money set aside that we're fixing to start getting the stuff for the teen section. Holland Park is an intergenerational park, it's got something in it for everybody, and so, we're gonna start on the teen section, getting their materials ready. We probably won't get those in this year, it might be next year before we get those in, but we're working on that. And then, our last one, Mrs. Mitchell has wrote the grant for a pavilion. We've had several people ask about when it was gonna have a pavilion, they can have birthday parties, family reunions, and things like that, and so, we've got the grant in for the pavilion. And so, all of that is beginning to shape up. After we get all of that done, we are also talking about a new kayak launch down by the river section of it, and maybe in the future, a waterspray park for the kids. So, that's what we're working on with Holland Park, but right now, I think we're gonna have to get somebody else from out of state or somewhere to come in and help us to get some things placed. We're, we're hoping in the next few days, though, they've got the holes and everything dug for the seniors' section, and so, they will get those placed. I went to Albion College, and I talked to the people there that does the landscaping for Albion College, and they were very, very nice. They came out, they looked at what we wanted to do with History Hill, because in the middle of the park is a little hill that's, we're putting a history of Albion and of Mr. Holland, the person who was honored by being named after that, by that park. And so, we plan on, and I'm not sure if this date is exactly right, but August thirteenth during the dedication for History Hill, and so, there, they're gonna have interactive boxes that will give you the history of the area and of Mr. Holland and things that happened there with West Ward School and other things, and so, we, in talking with Albion College, we had three people who work on their grounds who have volunteered to donate their time for free, that's gonna come out and do that hill for us. We were very fortunate, Mr. Masternak called and told us that they had rocks that we could use to help with the landscaping, and so, we went and got those. We had Juneteenth there in the park, and we raised two hundred and eighty dollars towards plants that we're gonna buy to decorate History Hill, and so, it's all beginning to come together, and pretty soon, it's gonna be really, really nice, and we invite you all to come. Thank you.
Thank you. City managers report?
Mayor and council, well, first I wanna start off, we received a notification from the chamber that the canoe, the kazoo, was canceled for this weekend due to low water levels. But Erin Smith of the Albion Outfitters is planning an alternate event and on the Kalamazoo River cleanup, so anyone interested in paddling on July twenty-third and hoping with the cleanup, I guess you can contact the chamber or contact Erin. Also, on the twenty-third, we were going to have a major cleanup, I'm calling it the beautification weekend. We'll have the tire collection, paint collection, there is a fee for the cans of paint, cleanup, just general cleanup, and electronics collection. So, I want to encourage everyone in the community to not only spruce up their own areas, but look in your neighborhood or your neighbors, and if there's someone you know who needs assistance, to pitch in and help each other out, so that we can make Albion a beautiful place to be. Awesome, it was mentioned earlier that we received the twenty-five hundred dollars from the senior millage in regards to the Albion Marshall Connector Service, so we have recouped some of the dollars that have been advanced by city council for the connector service. And we also received through recreation from the Battle Creek Community Foundation, a grant to support the, from the Michigan Fitness Foundation, for their adding activities to the, to their summer camp program as part of their process of having physical activity for summer mill sites. So, our camp is considered one of the summer mill sites, so we'll have that additional activity through another partnership. And because of the recreation, providing transportation on Fridays to the free movies at the BOM, they're having upwards of two hundred and fifty to three hundred students attending the free movies at the BOM, so that has been an exciting new program in terms of providing the transportation so that students throughout the community are able to attend and sharing the fun and free popcorn. And because of our partnership with Marshall Public Schools, they also are getting a snack as a part of being there on that Friday. And I have been participating with the Calhoun County Lead Task Force, so they're having their monthly meetings. They have received a grant to have testing equipment here in Albion, and I was just advised that they have actually started testing at the clinics here in Albion, so that started, and we're also working on countywide assessments as well as approaches to addressing environmental issues relative to lead in, lead paint and environmental hazards related to lead, as well as how can we get children zero through six tested and those remediations in place. And you had asked for the assessors equalization, county equalization, someone from the state to come, we finally found a date. We were looking originally, I think it was July twenty-sixth, so the first date where we can get everybody here will be August thirtieth, so that meeting will, that study session will be August thirtieth at six-thirty. And finally, I'm very pleased to announce that I have appointed Larry Williams as the acting director for the Recreation Department. The department is going through a number of transitions because of all these different partnerships, and things are just changing in terms of the logistics of the school and what's going to be happening, and it just made more sense to have someone as the point person to be in charge of coordinating all of those activities. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Yes?
Just to follow up, Cheryl, wasn't he, wasn't Larry Williams all the acting director last year, currently, the acting director?
No, he was brought in as the coordinator.
Okay, okay.
So, he is acting, and he is still considered part-time.
Okay, thank you.
Future agenda items? Yes?
Next meeting, I'm gonna rebrief the council, the ordinance to amend the refuse hauler, ordinance to allow for single hauler. We have to make a small modification because the way our licensing ordinance is set up, it says that basically anyone that meets the requirements shall be issued a license. So, I modified it so that the council, if the council likes to select a single hauler, they can limit it to one license as it relates to residential records.
Okay. Anyone else? I would like to see the plans of the 101 Superior Building, what's gonna go inside there. I've heard, I haven't seen anything, so I'd like to see the plans on that building.
Okay. I can share this with you.
If there is nothing else, motion to excuse absent members?
Hello?
Garrett call?
Call with an email.
Okay. Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Citizens' comments, persons addressing the city councils, you'll limit their comments to no more than five minutes, proper decorum is required. Citizens, if anybody has a comment, please come forward with your name and address, please.
My name is Wayne Arnold, I live at nine oh six Hall Street. This is the Mayor Joe, I can appreciate some things he said, 'cause I'm too a lifelong resident of Albion, and, and so, and the gentleman here, yeah, we got a bad problem here as far as streets go, so good luck. I pay eighteen thousand dollars in taxes, can't even get my street shoveled within a two days, two days period, but that's neither here nor there. Okay, first of all, like I say, I'm a lifetime resident of Albion, and what I'm hearing through my church and throughout this city and from our senior citizens is that we're not being informed on anything at all, okay? This prompted me to bid for the fourth precinct, for a fourth precinct city council person. Now, initially, what I'm hearing from the fourth precinct, nice to meet you, Ms. Dicker, I never met you, I didn't know who my precinct person was, and everybody in my district, in our districts, which I've been talking to initially, say, well, who's our fourth precinct council person? I don't know, I don't, I don't know, nobody knows. And I asked, well, have you been informed? So what I'm hearing is, we don't know our city, we don't know our council person. We're, we're not getting any feedback, we're not getting any information. So what I'm, what I'm concerned about is us going forward. Now, what I see downtown is great, Albion looks great, the things that's coming, I hear we got a new restaurant, we got, I see, we got the Taco Bell there. But I don't know how that's addressing the problem. I'm, I'm a, I'm a senior citizen now. So, and I'm paying $1,800 in property taxes and I think it's becoming a burden on us senior citizens. I think we've been, been carrying Albion a long time, so we need a little relief. So that's why I'm throwing my name in the hat, because we need to be informed, okay? Like I said, I've, I've seen Albion be up, I've seen Albion be down, and now I see Albion coming back up. And who's ever responsible, I applaud you. But I think it's very important, especially this year, that, that we get things right. Because, you know, we facing some, we facing some troubling times ahead, believe it or not. But here's the thing, we need to be informed, okay? Senior citizens need to be taken care of better than we've been taken care of. Of course, we got bad roads and streets, we've been through that, the gentleman here, yeah, good luck with that one. But anyway, but, but, you know, we, we need to take care of our senior citizens better, we need to be more informed and, you know, and that's why I'm running for fourth precinct council person.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sandy Kingston, I came here tonight just to introduce myself, I'm your new principal at the elementary school here in Albion.
Oh, pleased to meet you.
And I wanted to, thank you, I'm very excited to be part of the community here and I wanted to make sure everyone has an open invitation to come into the school. It's under construction, we're making it beautiful and wonderful again and it will be absolutely beautiful when we're finished with it. And we're having open house, it sounds like you have something to do on August 30th now, but, open house will be August 30th, we're planning on hopefully having it done before then so we can have folks just come in and see the building and, and get used to it being open again. So, thank you for having me.
Thank you, you're welcome. If there are no further.
I've gotta come talk. Mike Bearman, 1101629 Mile Road, Albion, Michigan. Want to thank Mayor Corvista Group, tremendous. Anything I can do at the county level to help you out, I'd love to, because there's a lot of things that we can work together. Want to say that, like we work with Cheryl, we've been talking about a lot of other things, ways that we can collaborate with the city through the roads and that sort of thing. There's a lot of things we can do together. Want to also thank you for taking and passing, looking into the garbage pickup more and hopefully that will help a lot of the dumping that's going on out in the townships because we've gotta stop that also. And want to also, gentlemen over here, you know, I'm on both the area agency on aging's board and also on the senior village board and got them working together and they're bringing a lot more. We know that about 60% of Albion's residents are seniors. So we've gotta work, we've gotta work together on that and that sort of thing, so. Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna put myself that old. But anyway, there's a lot of things that we are trying to work together on for that and collaborate. And what I also want to make a offer to is any of the people that are running that want to know what the county is working on and that sort of thing, I'm willing to sit down and talk to any of them. Republicans, Democrats, I don't care because the thing is, it's our town and we've gotta make sure that everything's going together and it's collaboration across all the townships and everything. Also, wanted to give a quick shout out, Brembo Foundry is up and pretty much running and you're gonna see more and more of that coming up and they're hiring. Clement's Food Group was down there talking to them the other day and they will be hiring four to six months prior to the first hog being slaughtered and the first hog supposed to be slaughtered, Labor Day 2017. So therefore, next April, May, they'll be starting to hire all of their employees, they're looking, will be looking for 850 to 1,000 employees there. And that's not too far to travel. We've been looking at public transportation, trying to find a ways that we can get transportation there for that. We're also trying to look into a lot of other things to be able to help the community out here, Homer and all around, so we are all working together on things of that nature. Was down last week looking at pictometry and the ways that they're gonna be able to help you out also in your assessing and that sort of thing also. And the things that they have, the new things that are, they're coming out with is just absolutely fantastic. And that's another service that's coming to you from the county. So a lot of things coming to you from the county and we've gotta make sure that we're collaborating on everything we can do to make Albion a better place because if Albion thrives and that, the county thrives. And also Homer and the townships around us, we all have to work together. And hopefully, we can all work together for a common goal as we're going through this. Thank you.
You have to come back up, please?
I had to ask a question, one of the citizens wanted me to ask why I came to you. I don't know if I need to mention his name or not, but he stays on Burrow Street. And so he wanted me to ask, and I guess this in regards to Ms. Kraus' district. He was, he told me to ask this question, he said, he wanted to know if Ms. Kraus live on Burrow, how can she...
She doesn't live on Burrow.
She doesn't.
I don't live on Burrow.
Oh, okay, well, then, he don't know, he don't know Ms. Kraus very well. Because I thought he, he was under the impression that Ms. Kraus stayed on, on Burrow.
No.
Close.
I live on Burrow Street. Mrs. Decker does.
Oh, maybe you got your big, you see how confusing things are?
Not a problem.
Yes or yes?
If there are any no more comments, I will ask for an adjournment.
So moved?
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Thank you all very much.